Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And ask you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I'm gonna ask Councilman Knapp to lead us in the pledge. And Councilman Curran, you'll lead us in prayer. Well, Councilman Knapp, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Curran?
Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and disposed to do your will. Bless us with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Endow with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice, peace, and that through obedience to thy law we may show thy praise among nations. Fill our hearts with thankfulness; suffer not our trust in you to fail; and look lovingly on our servicemen and women, that they may return home in peace. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Councilman. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon.
President.
Nagashet.
President.
Johnson.
President.
Trombetta.
President.
Caladrino.
President.
Perkins.
President.
Visconti.
President.
Sheenice.
President.
Esposito.
President.
Sadi.
President.
Cabo.
President.
Wottello.
Here.
Ty Schultz.
President.
Arconte.
President.
Curran.
Here.
Knapp.
President.
Levy.
President.
Riley.
Seaberry.
Here.
Stanley.
Twenty present and absent. Please let the record reflect that Mr. Riley is out on medical issues. Before we begin the public speaking portion of the night, we have some special awards that we want to hand out in the interest of not tying up some of our valuable time of our city employees. I'd like to indulge the council to be able to present these now, but these are awards that are presented to each of the individuals who have served the city for a variety of years. It's a new program designed by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities in conjunction with the City of Danbury. We did identify a few more folks that will be forwarding to CCM also for certificates for their work. So I'm gonna call these individuals up, ask them to accept award, and thank them for their service to our city. Of course, first and foremost is the longest-serving councilman in the history of our city, and that would be Mr. John Esposito with 25 years. In addition, we'd also like to recognize an individual who has 40 years with the City of Danbury. I don't know if he's the longest-serving employee, but I think he is, and that's everybody's favorite Lieutenant Jimmy King. Jim? We also have an award for our favorite, one of my all-time favorite engineers, except for Farina Antonio. I don't want to get them upset. I don't know if she's here tonight.
She is.
She's here? Oh, there she is. Pat and I struck up a friendship when I first took office, and she even to this day is here to provide support and kibbets and help in all these wonderful city projects we have going. So Pat Ellsworth with 35 years. We also like to recognize our favorite sergeant, Bob Guerera, who's been with us for 30 years. Also was very instrumental in working closely with PAL and working with children over these last many years. I don't know if Bob is here. I didn't see him coming in, but is he here, chief? If not, let's give him a round of applause. I was looking at this today. I wasn't sure if my father had appointed this individual to serve the city, but he does a great job for us. Chairman of our zoning board of appeals, everybody's friend, somebody who has led with knowledge, integrity, and fairness and sense of fairness towards all the residents, and that's Dick Jowdy for 30 years. I'm not trying to date Dick or anything, but my father, when he was mayor, appointed him into the position he's in. We also have a certificate for Lieutenant Charles Clue. Charlie's been with us for 30 years, and the police department has been doing an outstanding job, and we appreciate him keeping all our records squared away and straight. You guys are getting a good workout today, right? We also like to recognize our captain of our detective division, No Crime Too Big or Too Small to Solve. In addition, this individual has served as acting chief at times of transition. He does an outstanding job. He's a good friend of mine, and I'm proud to know him and proud to have him affiliated And we have some individuals with 25 years of experience here. This individual works in the town clerk's office, and she, I remember her when she was driving for Mayor Dyer as his security person, but she's a good friend, and I have to tell you, her family has served the city in a variety of capacities in different ways over the last many years. She cares about Danbury each and every day. She does a great job in the town clerk's office. Proud to call her my friend, Pam Evenuska, 25 years. Next 25-year employee is an individual who really needs no introduction, but every time I see him, I always say, Jimmy, get us some money, will you? And he never really tells me what he's working on, because he's detective, so he detects. But he says, I'm working on it. I got something coming. Don't worry, we're gonna be good. And that is Detective Jim Fisher, who, by the way, has been responsible through the asset forfeiture program of probably topping well over several million dollars of seizures he's done over the years. All that money comes back to the department for equipment and the things that we need. So Jim Fisher, come down and receive your certificate. Last but not least, Captain Weston and Lieutenant Fisher couldn't do it alone without his staff in the detective bureau and the special investigations division, and so I want to congratulate, thank personally for his hard work on behalf of the citizens of this community, and this Dan Trombetta for 25 years working for the city. You'll never see these guys again. They'll go back undercover, and we read about them. So congratulations to all of them. With that, we're gonna move to the public speaking portion of our meeting. The first 30 minutes of each common council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I would ask that any member of the public that wishes to address the council must do so about an item on the agenda and must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the City of Danbury. So with that, does anybody wish to address the common council this evening? Mr. Silva?
My name is Jeanne De Silva. I live at 174 Franklin Street Extension. I'm a member of the Richter Park Authority, serving as the liaison from the Richter Arts Association, and I am here to speak in reference to items 3 and 21. Three, regarding the filling of vacancies on the Richter Authority Board, I offer no suggestions other than to say that appointments should be general geared to the arts as well as golf. In regard to item 21, the length of the term of the Stanley-Lasker-Richter Park Authority, it would seem to me that the five-year option makes more sense, because much time is needed to go through the process of establishing priorities, continuity, and work schedules to make the house and grounds suitable for maximum and varied use, as the golf course is. Eighty acres of Richter Park was donated by the Richter family to serve all citizens of Danbury for recreational purposes. Right now, the park offers arts activities, musicals, hiking trails, golf, and tennis. As you know, golf is the main activity. In a letter dated May 18, 1969, Mr. Martin Goze, chairman of the Conservation Commission, writes Irene Myers Richter of the progress being made at Richter Park. He writes that the work of artists will be quartered at the house. He tells her of plans to form an arts association. He asks her if the gallery, which he hopes to establish there, could be named after her. The arts was considered an important part of the park from the beginning. The Richter House provides an intimate setting in which artists can perform and show their works. The audience has an opportunity to meet the artists and share ideas. Danbury has far too few venues of this type. It needs more. It needs more. Renting space from the schools and Westcon is too expensive for most artists. The Richter Park Authority was given the responsibility to maintain the park, quote, "to construct and reconstruct park facilities as authorized by law only within said park", unquote. When the park first began, the house was cared for as part of the charge given to the authority, but in the last 20 years or so, the house has been sorely neglected to the point where it has deteriorated badly. I spoke with Mrs. Leganza, Mrs. Richter's granddaughter, a year ago. She stated that Mrs. Richter would want the house to remain a center for the arts, as it had been when she and her husband lived there. In December of 2006, the roof of the house was inspected, and it was found to be in need of replacement. The roof has not yet been repaired, and you know what happens to a building with a bad roof. It is believed that the roof repair will be in the next city budget. Other important improvements.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Other important improvements at the house are needed. Little effort has been made in making these improvements. The authority says it doesn't have the money, and yet, when the golf course needs work, money is found. There is currently a bond for $410,000 for golf course improvements. None of it is for the house. The Danbury State Legislative Delegation has supported a bond request for $300,000 to renovate the house. Half should be used in 2008, 2009, and half in 2009 and 2010. Many people are urging Governor Rell to release the funds. So far, she has not done so. The city must take leadership in an effort to restore the house and the grounds surrounding it. The Richter family enriched our community with their ongoing gift. Their home is a monument to their memory. We must work to preserve it as an important part of our cultural heritage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Yes.
No, I said, thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council this evening? And Mrs. Basso, Mrs. Sananian, and Mr. Gucker.
Pauline Basso, 8 Hoyt Street, Danbury, Connecticut. The first one I'd like to speak on is number 20. Selling property on Rockwood Lane. I'd really wish the city would look into this further. I think there's an awful lot of unanswered questions, and I think these should be answered before we sell any of our city property. I was also gonna talk on 21, and I do agree with the lady before me who spoke. I think she spoke eloquently on it, and I think this is something we have to preserve. I know this is not what we're doing tonight. I would have liked to have seen the government entities down to two years rather than five years, so that if there's a problem, they can come back to us every two years, or even in two years, and say, hey, look, we've got a problem. I remember being on the council not too many years ago, and we did loan the golf course quite a bit of money, interest-free, which we always do, but that is our entity, and they did pay it back, but that was for the golf course. The other one I'd like to say is on number 22. Thank you for doing something about parking on the lawns. It's something that should have been done 10 years ago before it got out of hand. Thank you, and a very happy birthday to my friend Louise McMahon.
Mrs. Basso. Chad, you're up.
I can't stand up out of this chair. It's too low.
Okay. We'll bring the microphone to you. We aim to please.
Hi, my name is Chad Sananian. I live at 11 Thorpe Street, and there's something I'd like to speak about, about the Richter Park. Last year, I attended my first performance, which I like fiddling around the roof at Richter Park, when I realized, you know, I looked online and I saw how cheap it was. But I would like the city, the common council, and the Richter Park Authority to get their priorities straight. I mean, all I hear about is the golf course and everything in the papers, and how much money has been, you know, allotted for the golf course, but I want the Richter Park Authority to look at the Richter House and the plays that are performed there. I mean, ever since we lost the Candlewood Playhouse and that, you know, and I started going to Richter Park, you know, for the first time, I've realized how much plays are important to me. I used to belong, I used to belong to the ability beyond disability theater troupe, and we put on plays and everything else, and what I'm saying is that acting and cultural arts and these plays and these musicals mean a lot to me and a lot of people. And I was looking online, and I saw that you're having some plays this year. One of them I'd like to see, and what I want to see is if we could come to some sort of thing where we could refurbish the Richter House and continue to perform plays over there. I don't want to see us lose anything. I mean, we already lost the Candlewood Playhouse. I don't want to see us to lose the Richter Playhouse or the plays and stuff. I like golfing too, but the plays mean more to me than golfing does, and I think we ought to do something about the plays and the performing arts and all that stuff. Thank you.
Chad?
Ken Gucker, 89th Page and Air Road, want to speak on, obviously, item 20. I am against the sale of the land, as you, most of you well know. I think we need to look into, as Ms. Basso put forward, more information on this. I was very happy to see what the council came up as a compromise during the meeting of the whole, as far as trying to preserve this particular piece of property, deed restricting it. What I would like to see is more information looked into on this deed restriction aspect, because there has been a lot of properties in the City of Danbury over the years that have had deed restrictions overturned. We have some very talented land use attorneys in this town that can find holes in just about everything that we have, and somehow, there's always a way of swapping it over to where it's a hardship, et cetera, to where we wind up on the short end. So I would like to see more discussion on that. And finally, I have to say this from my heart. The meeting of the whole was probably the most unilateral, best council meeting I have ever attended. I actually watched bipartisanship happen in this chamber, where everybody worked together on a positive stroke to try to come up with a great compromise. And I know I've come up here many times, and I've done nothing but been very negative. I have nothing but good to say about what happened here, and I hope that that is something that continues on, and you all deserve a very heartfelt thank you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gucker. Mary, come on forward, and then we'll get, we'll get to... No, you do a fine job. Just make sure you give your name and address.
Okay, I just came to speak. Okay. As regards the item on Richter Park Authority, I wish, and I think I've always wanted, that all of these authorities should be done away with. It is a fact that when they decide they want something accomplished without going to the public, who is every bit a part of the decision-making process, when it pertains to property given to the people, the city, by generous people who only want to truly give up themselves to community they love, it is wrong, in case anyone here tonight did not see the News Times opinion on March 10. I'm not a good public speaker, people, so forgive me.
You're gonna have to pay for that.
Thumbs down to the closing of Richter House by Danbury's Richter Park Authority. It was done in a secretive arbitrary fashion that does not befit an organization with public responsibilities, but the vote to close the house later rescinded has served one good purpose. It has focused attention on the authority's mishandling of its management responsibilities, which includes maintaining arts programs as requested by the Richter family. When their land was donated to the city, the Richter House needs repairs, but it should never have been all allowed to deteriorate. The authority maintains its golf course. Why hasn't the authority maintained the Richter House? And by the way, I don't blame Ms. Mayor Bounton for letting it go down as it has.
Be advised.
It's been all the mayors throughout. It's all the mayors throughout the years since we took it. That's their fault. Please forgive me. I think I'm gonna faint in a minute, so... Oh, God, I'm so nervous. I wished I had a drink before I came. This is a travesty to take away something the people of Danbury loved behind closed doors. The Richters wanted the people to enjoy that lovely house. This reminds me of the tragedy of the closed-door hearing on the property of Hearthstone in early 2006, when a member of the common council, Ted Kasumpas, made a motion to the common council while a member of the authority to declare the property below Hearthstone surpluses and let GRC, Gary Michaels, put up his nine mansions, property given to the people of Danbury by the Jennings family, so that it would remain passive recreations for generations to come. Thank God it was found out before it was too late and withdrawn. Heaven help Richter Park. When Donna gets a hold of it, trees will die by the hundreds, and that beloved small house will be gone forever. The wonderful people like the Jennings family and the Richters, who wanted so much to give to the people of Danbury, what an insult to them, this unselfish act they wanted, to see that something so important is left to the present and future generations and provide a stronger love for our city. Thank you for bearing with me, folks. I think I'll have a drink, but I go home.
Mrs. Reynolds, just your address, just your address for the... Mrs. Mitchell? The floor is yours. And then Mr. Jannelli.
Margaret Mitchell. When I'm in town, I'm at Two Park Place. I'm a property owner, but not a resident. The Richter Park meeting lasted two and a half hours, and it was sort of a painful meeting over there at Warner Hall at the university, because you could see they'd done a marvelous job with the golf course, but the house had fallen into disrepair, and that was really painful. But I actually came about something nobody else came about. It's number 13. It's the Emanuel Lutheran License Agreement, and I don't know if that's gonna be on consent or you're gonna discuss it a little bit on read and vote. The grandmother in me just came out, and I wondered if the house is gonna be ready for head start in the fall, and I wondered if this was gonna hold up cleaning up the house in any way. I wondered if it had already been cleaned up, and maybe it would, it would get the rugs dirty or the wall. I don't know how far you've gotten on the project, but I just thought, well, if it's gonna be ready for the children in the fall, maybe it's not in our best interest to do this short-term, even though I think it'd be a big boon to do something like this and have other people do filming in downtown Danbury. But I'm sure you're all gonna ask all those questions, because I got a yes to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell.
My name is Richard Jannelli. I live at 18 Benson Drive in Danbury. I'm also a member of the Board of Education. I'm here tonight just to ask your indulgence and to vote favorably on item number 15, which is the son-lease agreement. This is absolutely essential, crucial, for the infrastructure of the school system. They're trying to replace a very antiquated system that is not working properly. These new switches that we're asking for will be an upgrade throughout the district. It would also enhance and work with the safety program. We have new cameras coming in, so I just ask that you look favorable upon the lease. Thank you very much.
My name is Edward Ward. I live at 37 Worcester Heights Road in Danbury. There is a very special place for Richter Park in my heart for a number of reasons. When Mrs. Richter gave her Westlake Farm to the City of Danbury, it was done with a I have to pay for this, too.
You're good, Mr. Ward.
When Mrs. Richter gave her Westlake... When Mrs. Richter gave her Westlake Farm to the city of Danbury, it was done with the stipulation that that be developed into a recreational complex to include provision for the arts. She never said, "Make sure there are soccer fields or baseball diamonds or sandboxes for little children." There was one specific, and that was provide for the arts. When ordinance created Richter Authority, the charge to that authority was to develop that property, to maintain the buildings, and to maintain that property, to set policy, to establish budgets, and whatever else came as time went on. There was a time shortly after the Art Association was established, and by the way, that was established as a subcommittee to Richter Authority. So Richter Authority is the umbrella up here. Everything else is underneath it, golf, tennis, art association. So it is clearly Richter Authority's responsibility to take care of everything that is there. The golf course progressed, the Art Association progressed, people started to come, and at times, there wasn't enough parking. There was discussion about tearing up the front lawn of that Art Association building. It didn't take long, and a note came from Mrs. Richter, very brief and to the point. There was a check in the envelope as well. Mrs. Richter mentioned her beautiful home, that spectacular rock garden out in front, and Stanley's croquet court on the front lawn. Needless to say, the cars went elsewhere. It simply is the responsibility of Richter Authority to adhere to Mrs. Richter's wishes. Now, we owe it to her for her memory, for her terrific gift to her granddaughter, Ann Williams, who for many, many years drove to Danbury from Westport to attend meetings, not only to look out for her grandmother's interests, but to look out for the golf course and the tennis. And Ann, again, was never even a resident in the city of Danbury, but looked very favorably on it. And in speaking to Ann a couple of weeks ago, she asked me to convey a message to Richter Authority, and that message was, "Do not tear that house down. Find a way to repair it." And I did that. And I will simply ask of all of you, and I know it's not the job of the common council to run Richter Park. It is autonomous. The mayor appoints the members to it, and then it is up to Richter Authority to go from there. But you are influential people in influential positions, and I would ask, whatever you can do to make sure that that building is preserved, that you do that. We owe it to Mrs. Richter. We owe it to the many, many people that gave of their time and their talent, and in many cases, their money, to get that Art Association going. We owe it to former Mayor Gino Arcanti, who was very, very instrumental in bringing all of that about. And really, I think Gino never got the credit that he deserved, but we certainly owe it to him now or to his memory. So from my personal position, as I said earlier, there is a very special place in my heart for Richter Park, and I would ask simply that you all do whatever you can. Please, don't tear that building down. Put it back in its original condition. Thank you.
Mr. Ward. Any other members of the public? We're in a few minutes left. Seeing them, then we'll move on with our regularly scheduled meeting. There are several announcements that I just want to point out to the common council. First of all, we have a number of birthdays and wedding anniversaries. April 3rd is Jim Johnson's birthday. Councilman, happy birthday. Congratulations. April 7th is Councilwoman McMahon's birthday. April 25th is Councilman Levy's birthday. And April 29th is Mr. and Mrs. Visconti's 30th wedding anniversary. Most of the events are already listed for you on the agenda that I provided for you. Anybody wants to come and hang out on April 19th? We have Saturdays with the mayor from 9:00 a.m. to noon in my office. I do want to point out to the council, May 3rd is Clean City Danbury Day, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Our standard layout will, in terms of where our dumpsters are gonna go, and the standard protocol will be in place. If the council could make room in their time to volunteer that day to help direct traffic of our residents and demand certain places, it would be greatly appreciated. We've had a strong turnout from the council that morning, and I know that we're guaranteed at least to bring you some donuts and coffee during the day. So we'd appreciate it if you have time to see what you can do to help us out there. The rest of the items are pretty self-explanatory on the agenda. Again, this is not by no means the only items that are happening, events that are happening during the month, and so you can always check with Wendy DeCosta in my office if you have other concerns or want to know best time to attend. With that, Mr. President, minutes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Eggersett to waive the meetings of the minutes, as all members have copy. Are there any deletions, changes, or corrections to the minutes as presented? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and acceptance of the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Majority Leader, the consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent calendar, April 1st, 2008. Number three, receive the communication, confirm the appointment of John D. Priola as a member of the Stanley Alaska Richter Memorial Park Authority, with a term to expire February 1, 2009. Number four, receive the communication and confirm the appointments of Mark Langley and Mary G. Saraceno as members of the Transit District Board of Directors, with terms to expire April 1, 2011. Number eight, receive the communication, approve the appointment of McGlattery and Pollan LLP to perform the city audit in fiscal year ending June 30, 2008. Number nine, receive the communication, approve the transfer of $30,535 from the Historic Documents Reserve Account 2.2129 to the Town Clerk's Office Equipment Line Item 1160.5701 in the amount of $26,225, and to the Town Clerk's Office Supply Line 1160.5601 in the amount of $4,310, as requested. Number 14, receive the communication, approve the request from Wayne Toward Reliant Aircraft Services, Inc. and Reliant Properties to grant a temporary grading easement for the reconstruction of the airplane hangar at One Whibley Road, Danbury, Connecticut. Number 16, receive the communication, adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Scott Leroy to apply for and accept funding from the Mercer Memorial Foundation in the amount of $3,500. Number 17, receive the communication, adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Scott Leroy to apply for and accept funding from the Connecticut Coalition to end homelessness in the amount of $66,352. Number 18, receive the communication, adopt the resolution to authorize Mayor Mark D. Bowden or Fire Chief Jeff Harrell to apply for and accept funding from the Connecticut Fair Plan Anti-Arson Committee not to exceed $500. Number 20, receive the report and recommit to previous ad hoc committee, along with the report from the Director of Planning. Number 22, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee. Number 24, receive the report and approve the recommendations of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Seaberry. What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilwoman Teicholz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the consent calendar as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item one, please.
Communication. Collective bargaining agreement between the city of Danbury and the Danbury Municipal Employees Association, Incorporated. Dear members of the common council, I am very pleased to present to the council a proposed agreement between the city of Danbury and the Danbury Municipal Employees Association, Incorporated, the UPS EU Local 424 Unit 14. Representatives of the city and the union engaged in good faith negotiations to present an agreement that would greatly benefit all. The proposed agreement is a two-year term, beginning July 1, 2007, and ending in June 30, 2009. A copy of the agreement is on file in the city's clerk's office for your review. The agreement includes wage increases of 3.5% and 3.5% annually for each year included in this contract. There has been no change to the health insurance or pension benefits. Language throughout the contract has been clarified, such as updates to the FMLA and the military leave sections in order to comply with state and federal law. Additionally, greater flexibility has been gained in the use of sick time, allowing employees to utilize their sick time in one-hour increments as opposed to half-day increments. In the area of reclassifications, a side letter has been included that will allow a revision to the reclassification system. The parties have agreed to continue to meet and develop a more comprehensive and updated process to ensure appropriate compensation for a specific designated position. Your vote in favor of this agreement would produce positive effects for all involved. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilwoman Diggs.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to make a motion to receive the communication and approve the contract as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded by Councilwoman Teicholz. Discussion regarding the contract for clerical staff. Seeing no discussion at this time, I'll try your minds on adoption of the contract. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Communication. Promotion from the Danbury Police Department. Dear common council members, I am pleased to submit for your confirmation the promotion of Officer Vincent P. Daniello to the position of detective for the Danbury Police Department. Vincent was appointed in May 2000 and is the 2008 Exchange Club Officer of the Year. Officer Daniello is a member of the Emergency Services Unit and SWAT Team and is head of the department's honor guard. Vincent has many letters of acknowledgement for his efforts with Connecticut Special Olympic fundraisers. Vincent is the recipient of several letters of appreciation and commendation, including the Exceptional Police Service Award for seizing an illegal handgun and drugs during an assault complaint in August 2004, and a meritorious citation for his investigation during the robbery and homicide that occurred in December of 2004, resulting in two arrests. Thank you for your consideration of this appointment. Sincerely, Mark D. Bowden, Mayor.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Arcani.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion, receive the communication, to confirm the promotion of Officer Vincent P. Daniello to the position of detective for the Danbury Police Department.
Made and seconded by Councilman Trombetta. Any discussion about Mr. Daniello's appointment? Seeing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Vincent, congratulations. Detective, we certainly, on behalf of the council, the city of Danbury, we look forward to you to continue up the career ladder. I just want to say that Vincent did an outstanding job in the interview process here, and I want to thank Jenny Alaska Warner, Chief Baker, and the whole team, Deputy Chief Shanahan, that helped interview him, and all the other candidates. There were really an exceptional pool of candidates, and you certainly rose to the top. So congratulations and good luck to you as you continue your career ladder here in the city of Danbury. Madam Clerk, items three and four were consent. Item five, please.
Communication. Donation to the police department. Two members of the council, Mayor and Mayor Mark D. Bowden from Allen D. Baker, chief of police. Permission is requested to accept a donation of $505.28 raised by the families of Emanuel Lutheran School. This donation will be used to purchase a K-9 first aid kit and various other police K-9 equipment that will be of use to K-9 Britta and her handler, Police Officer Antonelli. That's from Allen D. Baker, chief of police.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Eggersett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication, accept the generous donation, and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Second.
Made and seconded by Councilman Sheanisi. Any discussion about the donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication. Donation to the fire department. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the council, I would request the approval of the common council to accept a donation of lumber, valued at $130 from Matt's Lumber. This lumber will be used to improve our fire school facility on Plum Trees Road. If you require any additional information, please do not hesitate to contact me directly. Respectfully yours, Jeffrey R. Harold, Fire Chief.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Curran.
Make a motion that we accept the generous donation from Matt's Lumber and send an appropriate letter of thanks.
Motion made and seconded by Councilwoman McMahon. Any discussion about the donation of lumber? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item seven, please.
Communication. Donation to the Department of Elderly Services. Dear Mayor Bowden and members of the council, the Department of Elderly Services has received the following donations for the performances by the Cellmates, which is a senior center band and the senior center chorus from the following. The Village at Brookfield Common 25, Glen Hill 25. Additionally, HealthNA of Northeast Incorporated has donated a Wii interactive video game along with virtual bowling for the seniors to endure. This is valued at $250. We are grateful for this donation and ask the council to accept this donation, as well as the $50, transferring the $50 into line item 50025318 postage. Thank you. Respectfully, Susan M. Tamanio, Director of Elderly Services.
What's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Cavan.
Thank you, Your Honor. First time I've made a motion after assuming the agreement, accept the donation from the Village at Brookfield Common 25, along with the donation on the league, by talking about the working, and sending the vote by the times.
Seconded by Councilman Sheanisi. Any discussion about the donations? Mr. Cavan.
I just want to know, are we gonna have a Wii bowling league set up here in the city? Able to compete with the seniors?
Yes, we are.
I'll get my shirt out.
I have no idea what they're talking about. Anyways, let's move on. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor of the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 10, please.
Communication. Hatters Park Field Naming. Dear Mayor Bowden and council members, the park and rec. department would like to propose the naming of softball field number one at Hatters Park in Danbury to the Dick Raymond Field. Mr. Raymond spent the last 50 years organizing, coaching, administering, and promoting women's softball in our community. In addition, he was an officer for numerous softball organizations at the local and state level during that time. His work and dedication has earned him the respect of players and coaches alike. Naming the field for such an individual would truly show our appreciation and admiration for all of his achievements and for giving so much to the sport of softball in the Danbury area. Sincerely, Nicholas Complanis, Director of Recreation.
Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Arcanti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the communication, approve the proposal to name the softball field number one at Hatters Park in Danbury to the Dick Raymond Field.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Discussion about the naming of the softball field. Mr. Levy.
Your Honor, I certainly don't hold anything against Mr. Raymond. I understand he has been outstanding in providing women's softball in the city of Danbury. I know that there are several people over the years, I go back to the Mat Hatters and the Local 10 Wildcats, and Danny Carroll, along with Rich Lapine and Mr. Baker, Paul Baker, and Aiden Jamie. I think we need to develop a policy or a process for naming these fields, and certainly, I wouldn't have any objection after this goes to ad hoc committee, which I'm requesting that it take place after the naming of this field, so that Mr. Raymond gets that, but that a process is devised. that a process is devised.
Motion's been made for an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Cavill, Councilwoman Ty Schultz, and Councilman Esposito. Madam Clerk, item 11, please.
Communication, FAA leases. Dear Mayor and council members.
It's your pleasure, Council. Councilman Knapp?
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to ad hoc committee consisting of Corporation Council, Airport Administrator, and a report from the Planning Commission.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Calendino, Councilman Curran, and Councilman Visconti. Madam Clerk, item 12, please.
Communication, inter-local sewer and water agreement.
It's your pleasure, Council. Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee with Corporation Council and the Director of Public Works.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Calendino, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Sadi. Let me amend that. Let me switch. Councilman Sadi is going to be out of the country for a couple of weeks, so let me replace him with Councilman Visconti.
My country call.
We are proud of you. No comment there. Okay, item 13, please.
Communication, Emmanuel Lutheran License Agreement. Dear Mayor and council, we will be submitting to you shortly a final proposed location agreement or license to permit Pippa Lee, LLC, a movie production company, to occupy and use the main floor of the unoccupied former Emmanuel Lutheran School on Foster Street as its local site for movie production. Pippa's use is for a temporary period of approximately three months through mid or late June. They have occupied the premise pursuant to the city's building use policy for a brief interim period during, period due to time constraints pending your ratification of this location agreement. Briefly, the location agreement, in essence, is a temporary license that requires only your approval and does not require approval by the Planning Commission. It is not an interest in land, rather, a contract for use only. The agreement contains clauses providing insurance and other protections allowing for safe and mutual beneficial use. Pippa will pay a monthly license fee to the city in the amount of $2,000 for each month of occupancy through the end of the term. Kindly review and consider the ratification of the location agreement in order that this beneficial and exciting use of this facility can go forward. Please do not hesitate to contact us in the event you have any questions regarding the agreement. Very truly yours, Lazlo L. Pinter, Deputy Corporation Counsel.
It's your pleasure, Council. Councilman Cavill.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and authorize the office to channel a patient agreement of a temporary license.
Second. Made and seconded by Councilman Rotella. Discussion, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Corporation Council or whoever can feel this question from a public building standpoint, Mr. Palazzo possibly. Will this license in any way hold up or otherwise impact any of the renovations, improvements, or remediations that are going on at any of the, at the site?
I guess I can answer that. Mr. Idola can jump in when he wants, but basically, the answer to that question is no. We're still in a value engineering process on the building, and Mr. Idola, you want to just maybe, maybe just update?
Sure. I know there was a request from the public before to just get a little update on what the project was. The design is complete. Actually, we're at the state SFU today getting their approval for the first phase. First phase will be an actual building envelope rehabilitation and includes the roof and the building envelope. So, we're hoping to go into contract around July. So, this should not have an impact at all. And that's about it.
Is there any further questions?
No, not this time, Your Honor. Thank you.
Further discussion by the council. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just think this is something that we need to keep doing in the city. It's going to bring money downtown, money to the restaurants, money to the hotels, and so on. And I think that we made a wise decision in letting this go through so that other companies will be looking at us in the future. Thank you.
And Mr. Visconti, we have a role for you if you're interested in purchasing.
I understand that the, never mind.
Your wife called me.
Any other discussion? Mr. Sheeneysey.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, to Corporation Council, would this license agreement that is before us, would this be like a boilerplate that we use for the future for other city building locations?
In similar circumstances, we would. It's actually a fairly good agreement. It covers a lot of facets of this kind of use. It is a license agreement. It's a little broader than the typical license agreements. It could be either verbal or very short. This one attempts to properly cover the use of this sizable facility.
Mr. Pinter? Further discussion by the council. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor of the license agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Appreciate the council's cooperation on that initiative, and we'll keep you posted, let you know how it's working. Item 14 was consent. Madam Clerk, item 15.
Resolution, Sun Trust Lease Agreement. To Honorable Mark Bauton, City of Danbury Common Council, please find a text for your review. The lease agreement package from Sun Trust Equipment Finance and Leasing Corporation and CDW Government Incorporated for the leasing and financing of three com. corporation technology components. It is the Board of Education/Danbury Public Schools' intention to execute a four-year lease agreement for technology components of value $499,000. Attached you will find supporting documentation, including the sales quotation, lease terms, and amortization schedule. The total amount to be financed is $499,500, which includes a $500 document preparation fee. Funding for this lease will come from the Board of Education operating budget, with the first repayment deferred to fiscal year 2008-2009. On March 12th, 2008, the Board of Education voted unanimously to approve the lease arrangement and to forward a request to the City of Danbury Common Council, asking it to approve the lease agreement at the next meeting date. I respectfully ask that this request be placed on the Common Council April 1st, 2008 Agenda for Action. Please review this package and contact Mr. Eleo Longo Jr., the district's finance director, with any concerns, required changes, or recommendations that you may have. Mr. Longo can be reached by calling his office. Regards, Sal Pascarella, Superintendent of Schools.
It's your pleasure, Council. Councilman Cavill.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and adopt the resolution presented to us tonight that authorizes the Board of Education through the office of the Danbury Public School Superintendent to enter into and negotiate and execute an equipment lease along the guidelines of what we were presenting here tonight in our materials.
Made and seconded by Mr. Visconti. Discussion. Mr. Levy.
Your Honor, I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee along with the, I don't know whether this goes to the Planning Commission or not, through the chair to the Corporation Council.
Long way to go for the word no.
We certainly can do that, Mr. Levy. I will tell you that we are under a time constraint here. We risk losing our interest rate, and we could cause a significant amount of further payment due. I think it goes from 3.06 to 3.11 if we miss our rate lock. So, if there are questions you want answered tonight, Mr. Longo and Dr. Pascarella are here to answer those. If you insist, we can send, we can send it to ad hoc too, but just if there's any possible way.
I was not, the copy of the boilerplate contract that was referenced in here, I was not, I was not given any information on that, and I also have some concerns because of the deficit in the Board of Education's budget that was in the newspaper for $700,000, along with other monies that were expended as to where these funds were coming from and whether they were certified funds available, and I think all of this could be flushed out in an ad hoc committee. I realize these are typically in a rush situation, but I think sometimes we just have to take our time and review them carefully.
Well, we certainly can do that. It's unfortunate because we won't be able to get this till May. We will miss the rate lock on the interest. It's also unfortunate because we did have certainly a lot of time. This agenda was delivered on Friday, and folks could have called Mr. Longo and Dr. Pascarella and got more information, but obviously, the children will have to suffer on this one. So, the ad hoc committee shall consist of the following: Councilman Cavill, Councilwoman Ty Schultz, and Councilman Esposito. Sorry, folks. Madam Clerk, 16 through 18 were consent. Item 19.
Report, annual report of the Danbury Housing Partnership.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the report, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Motion made and seconded by Mrs. Ty Schultz to waive the reading of the report. All is in favor, see if you can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition to waiving the reading of the report? Seeing none. It's your pleasure, Council. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to receive this communication and accept the annual report of the Danbury Housing Partnership as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded by Councilman Negashat. Any discussion about the annual report? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 21, please. Item 20 was, item 20 was unconsented. You know what I mean, right? Yeah, it was unconsented. Mr.? Yeah. Yep.
What's on there?
Yeah, it's unconsented.
Item 21, please.
Report and ordinance, government entities.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of this report, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second. This has been made and seconded by Mr. Rotella to waive the reading of the report. Mr. Cavill made the motion. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. It's your pleasure, Council, on item 21. Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to receive the report and adopt the committee's recommendations.
This has been made. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion under item 21. Mr. Sheeneysey.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess it's more of a general comment, more than less, given the amount of public comment regarding the Richter Authority. But the question here, I guess, remains is that, that boils down to the lack of communications from our authorities to this council, and I know that it's in the ordinance that we should be getting.
Please proceed.
Well, I have no objections to the, to the request here this evening, but I do have a suggestion. Again, like I was saying, that the lack of communications from our authorities to this council needs to be vastly improved, and one of the things I would like to see is periodic reports from our authorities to this council to keep us abreast of what's actually going on within these authorities, so it doesn't come down to a situation where we have to act harshly in some cases, so. And more or less, it's not really going to be a recommendation, but more of a request to our authorities that they at least give us some type of periodic report, whether it be quarterly or monthly, so that we're at least aware of what's going on within their, within their approval. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Sheeneysey. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 23, please.
Ad hoc report and ordinance, sex offender ordinance.
Mr. Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of these minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion about waiving the reading of the report? I thought that was Mr.? Okay, that was Mr. Perkins. Any discussion about waiving the reading of the report? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. It's your pleasure, Council. Item 23, Mrs. Ty Schultz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the report and amend the ordinance as reflected in the report, including the adjustment of the maximum penalty of $250 and refer to a public hearing without objection. Second.
Never give Mrs. Stanley the microphone. Seeing that there, seeing that there is, there's no objection, then it is so ordered that we move to public hearing.
Who made the motion to do that?
Mrs. Ty Schultz. Item 24 was consent. Mr. President, department reports, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to waive the reading of the minutes of the department, or waive the departmental reports, as all members have copies and copies have, or copies are on file in the city clerk's office.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Negashat. Any discussion about department reports? Seeing no discussion, all is in favor, accepting the reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Mr. Cavill?
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add an item number 26 to the agenda, the resolution of VA grant for homeless shelter.
Motion's been made to add item 26 to the agenda, seconded by Mr. Seaberry. All is in favor of adding this to the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item 26, please.
To Honorable Mark Bauton, to the Common Council, from David St. Clair, Director of Finance. Attached for your review is a resolution that will allow the City of Danbury Health, Housing, and Welfare Department to apply for and accept funding from the Veterans Affairs Administration for the City of Danbury Homeless Shelter Operations. If the per diem grant is awarded, the funding will be used to reserve five beds in the homeless shelter for Danbury veterans. The Common Council is respectfully requested to consider this resolution at the next Common Council meeting.
It's your pleasure, Council. Councilman Cavill?
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive the communication and approve, adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark D. Bauton to apply for, and if the grant is approved, to accept the said funds and execute any agreements and documents necessary to effectuate its purpose.
This is made and seconded by Mr. Seaberry. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sheeneysey?
Thank you. Since we got this, this evening, can, to the, Your Honor, can you just give us an overview of the grant?
This is the first phase. Yesterday, we rolled out a new initiative here in the City of Danbury tied to the 10-year plan to end homelessness. This is called Housing for Heroes, and the goal here is to marshal our resources to provide ultimately what will be 30 units of housing for veterans, really from all wars that are struggling with housing issues and finding permanent, permanent housing. This is the phase one of this. We'll be adding, or actually, we'll be incorporating five beds of our shelter that will be used specifically for veterans. Part of this will include the triaging that we do through the Dream Homes Community Center and determining the needs and the strengths and the challenges that those individuals face. Then we'll move them towards the next stage, which will be transitional housing with supportive wraparound services that'll go with them, and then finally, we'll move them to hopefully homeownership opportunities somewhere in the community. So, this grant sort of kicks off that first part of being able to help those that have helped all of us so much. We have identified approximately 40 individuals who are veterans within the community that are homeless at this time or struggling with housing issues. Obviously, we like to have 40 beds, but not all of those individuals are necessarily on the streets either, but those are individuals that need access to housing, and so the next step will be that we marshal our resources with the Danbury Housing Danbury Housing Authority, the federal government, the city, as well as the nonprofit housing development corporation, to purchase a facility which will be able to house veterans as that transitional stage where they get their services and then hopefully move them into permanent housing. So that's why this is in front of you tonight. The application grant deadline, I believe, is April 3, or April, April 7, 8. Okay, so we like, we wanted to get that done before the next meeting. Mr. Sheenisi?
In the follow-up, Your Honor, would this require a match from the city?
There's no local match from the city. And we've had very strong signals from the VA that they will be supporting this grant. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, I'm going to extend all committees and remind folks that there is a special Common Council meeting Monday night where we'll have the budget meeting, assigned committees, and deliberations over the '09, '08, '09 spending year. With that, I'll entertain any more.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, would it be possible to revisit item 15 for a moment with a question? Is that our point?
Except by unanimous consent. I believe item 15 was the sun lease. Was that the lease agreement? It's been referred to an ad hoc. Unfortunately, we can't do that.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try, try your minds. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Okay, who did that? Mr. Sheenisi, seconded by Mrs. Diggs. All in favor, adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.